You want to curse?
How about when it's recorded, we don't curse at all. That tends to give us some letters.
Flash, you're retired, so you can just go wild.
So Kent, how's your diarrhea? Did you take the odorant?
Are you gonna find him?
Especially since he can't get out where you're at.
And that's on camera.
And that's what goes on camera this week. That's awesome. I know they're.
Seven o'clock, we call a meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Any others that you wish to move, Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, call the question in favor. Opposed, seen none, secured. Will's not here tonight again, he's at work, so. Move on to the regular council minutes of March twenty-fourth. Any questions, errors, missions? If not, somebody wish to move, Barbara? Hey Barbara, move them. Any discussion on Barb's motion? Hearing none, call the question, those in favor? Opposed, seen none, secured, dismissed. Well, we're on to the hard part, that's why we've got so many people here at the gallery. It's more people than we normally get. It is really quite an honor to say thank you to Dave Flash Stotter. I've known Dave almost all my life, can't hold out against him, I guess, but. It's been a real pleasure, Dave, for us to have had you with us and I know that you were with the Public Works in the, with the. Alberta Agriculture Parks or whatever they're called. You started with parks there and I don't know how many years you put in with them, but.
Twenty.
About twenty years and eighteen with us and so. Your last day was April the fourth. But yet you're gonna be around until thirty, I guess, so. You got a few holidays and time off that you need to fulfill. He's worked for at the arena, the pool, the park and dedicated his career with our community and. It's a testament that you can see all your fellow employees and employer stew over there. So is well respected, received your banner for the best Zamboni driver ever. At the arena, twenty nineteen. Plan on spending time with your family and golfing, I guess, I don't know, if you golf as good as me, Dave, you probably aren't very good at all, but.
Not anymore.
You'll be missed, you know, as frequent at the arena and the pool and the campground, like, you know, every time I ever went to the pool, it seemed though you're hanging around there somewhere, either working that day or being there, so. I know that you'll be definitely missed and council has made a contribution of some money towards something that you might want. I heard that you wanted a pillow, but. Two more items that I think you could buy, that would be more appropriate than a pillow. Anyway. They had a little. Award made up here for Flash, it says happy retirement from the Town of Vulcan, there's a Zamboni on it. Foundation of every good team is a great Zamboni driver, so. Thank you, David. It's been an honor, you know, that you, you know, it's just a testament that you appreciate our community and you want to stay there. And, oh, what's this?
You have to say a speech, see if you've got five minutes.
No, no, I knew nothing about it. No, no, I don't.
Can you tell a comic story?
No, I'm not.
There is a video.
There is a video on it?
It's wonderful.
Is it?
See, if I was a little bit computer smarty, I could get rid of it, but. All safe with me.
Yeah, no, it's been great, really, really appreciate them.
I appreciate everything. Thanks for all the support from the guys.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate, we've got a community that's got Public Works that's been around for years and, you know, it just shows that we're a community that do care, but sometimes, you know, Wanda, I don't know about her, but the rest of us do care a lot, a lot.
Wanda said she got dressed to come to town for this.
Anyway, thanks.
Don't go visiting.
We do have you, Marcus, the delegation, you do have fifteen minutes to give a speech if you want.
That's fine. I say this to everybody that comes, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, or if you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks, David.
That's a good idea with the shirt.
Video's worth seeing.
Okay, well onward upward, I guess, so we'll move on to correspondence. So we've got the Alberta Association of Nurses, Nursing Week Declaration. Any comments or questions on this one?
They didn't ask us to do a declaration, just the ways to support, so.
Last year, we did it with the county too, didn't we?
That's further on down in the meeting, and that's for the Rural Health Week as well, and it works in conjunction with this as well.
Okay. Then M L A Hunter's report, again, he has a lengthy report every month and.
Some good influence here, though.
There is, I mean, unfortunately, you know, if you're not a fan of their party, you can see it's slanted that direction, but that's, that's fine. I mean, at least he takes the time to create a document, none of our other ones do at all, you know, which is kind of disappointing, but. Okay, any question on Grant's M L A Hunter's report? Okay, moving on to, there's two there from Audible, Rick McGyver. First one's on the Election Act. And then the second one is on Bill fifty.
I didn't put much for background information because I do know that you're getting all the emails with, from the Alberta municipalities and the province on. They're putting on quite a few town hall meetings currently about this, so.
It is, you know, a public people say this too, it is a disappointment, you know, we've got a provincial government that asks our federal government, get out of their way and get out of their lane. And yet they have no problems getting in our lane, and so I have no problems publicly saying that, I told it to Grant, I said it to Nathan Newsorf and, you know, it is kind of disappointing that they want to move out of the way, but the other one, it's okay, we step in, move in, so.
Would you say it to Joseph Schau if you could find him?
If I, yeah, if he was around, I would definitely voice my dismay, I mean, because I don't think it's right, I think that, you know, we all are trying to do our best for our municipalities, whether it's provincial, federal, or municipal, and I think that there are times when, you know, it's not such a bad thing to tell us to work together, but, you know, sometimes it doesn't show when they're not willing to work together with us either, so. That's just a personal feeling, it has nothing to do with towns, it's personal. Anyway, if there's nothing else on that one, we'll move on to the Alberta Municipal A M meeting request. So everybody's had the opportunity to read this one.
Should work out fairly well, it's, we have a meeting that evening anyway, four, and they're just doing their rounds and the last time when Barry Morashita came, we had a really good opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation, I've become an attendant at the council chambers and.
So if that's agreeable, I'll get Kim or Karen to set this up and then go from there and send out an invite to us all so that we can attend the meeting when we.
Nate?
Okay, sounds good. Do we should have a motion to.
No, they did, this was just a confirmation, so I just said that I would more look for the nods on the head that that was a good evening and. I probably could have answered since it was a council meeting, but it is a little bit earlier than you normally commit, so.
Okay, moving on again, Old Man River Regional Services Commission, they've got a periodical spring one, this one's on brownfields, it was kind of interesting to read. Good article, they've had some great articles and so, you know, when somebody talks about the brownfield, this gives you more of an idea of what's being discussed. I question whether we shouldn't, you know, depending on what happens in the election, but some of this information, if we can share with new members, because. You know, you hear about funding or concerns by municipalities, especially in brownfields and some of the stuff that goes on at N P C sees it too. And, you know, if a new councillor comes along and how they need this information to bring them up to speed, so. Is there any questions on that article? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the last one, which is Vulcan A M I Network's information package.
So Fortis was good enough to provide us with the information on, they're basically going to, over the next few years, change all meters in town, they're going to a radio frequency read. Quite interesting, I had quite a good long conversation with Cody because we went radio read on our water meters over ten years ago, so. They're just making that shift, it'll allow them. Same as we're able to do, a lot more data will be collected, but the data on usage, things like that, so that they can update their entire system. So they're just putting in, ours, we drive around with it in a truck, they're actually gonna mount it with the streetlights, so they're always there, they just have to call them up, that's what they'll do. So they're pretty excited about getting that project going, so they're gonna do the deployment of the hardware first, make sure the network's all set up and then they're gonna do a few meters and then they'll start the big program of changing all the meters, so.
That won't interfere with the Star Trek theme, like I noticed at one point, they put something on the top of that.
None of the streetlights that they're doing will be, they're all their own, the only ones that have the Star Trek theme on are the ones that we own.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any question on this one? All right, need a motion to correspondence.
Except the first lines.
Great, thank you. Any question on Miles' motion? Hearing none, call the question, opposed, seen none, secured. Okay, moving on to current business, committee of the whole meeting.
So we've put everything together, we're hoping that we'll have everything for, this will usually be out a little bit later than we usually try to do it the last week of April, but of course, we do have some conflicting schedules, so I've tried to work this around, around those. Will's will be available for the sixth as well. It is a Tuesday, so it'll allow us to go through, we should council make any major changes, we should be able to get those done, unless it's a change to the mill rate calculation, we'll have to, we'll note that, and we'll be able to make that before the council meeting on the twelfth, so it'll be a week before. And that meeting at the twelfth is what we need to pass the budget, so we can send the mill rate and do the tax by law, so we can get the notice without time. A lot of times, this meeting doesn't take all day, so. I do have it tentatively scheduled for ten o'clock, but if you guys would like to start after lunch, that's probably fine as well.
It's golf day, ladies, golf day, so. Tuesdays are.
During today.
Well, we go about two thirty, three.
So do you want to start it in the morning and then get it done?
I personally, that's just my.
And we can bring in, we can bring in lunch and work through lunch as well.
Like, I don't know how long it'll take to do it, because, I mean, if there's not an awful lot of changes, I mean, we've already had it kick at it three to four times, so.
It'll be the updates to the budget and then the review of the mill rate.
Yeah, we might not need to go past noon if we start at ten, so. Does that sound good enough for nine thirty or, anytime after three thirty in the morning, I'm good, so. I just can't sleep past three thirty anymore. Go ahead, Cole.
I guess I'll make the recommendation that council approve the committee of the whole meeting to be scheduled for ten A M on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five, for the purpose of reviewing the draft two thousand twenty-five operations budget.
Cool, any comment on Cole's motion? Hearing none, call the question, those in favor? Opposed, seen none, secured, thank you. So, yeah, if you'll send over.
I will, I'll get that meeting invite sent out tomorrow morning.
All right, Declaration of Alberta Rural Health Week, this is the one that I made mistake on, that's with the county and.
Believe the county's already made a motion and he's done this the last couple of years.
Go ahead. I was just gonna make the recommendation that council declares May twenty-sixth to thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, as Alberta Rural Health Week, and we are execute the joint proclamation on behalf of the Town of Vulcan.
Okay, thank you. Any question on Miles' motion? Hearing none, we'll call question, those in favor? Opposed, seen none, secured, dismissed. Okay, moving onward, welcome County Cruisers.
They came in and chatted with Chris again and for the show and shine specifically, they're not asking for any changes from last year, so as council is aware, that's Center Street from Third Avenue to First Avenue and then Second Avenue from First Street, or the First Street South and then the parking lot. We're gonna have to change the wording on there between Lightmick and Hairhat, Hairhat is very soon going to be under a new name, so, but. For the purposes of identifying where that's at, everybody town knows where that's at, so.
I'll make the recommendation that council approve the use of two eleven First Street North parking lot and the temporary road closure of Center Street from First Avenue to Third Avenue and Second Avenue to First Street North to First Street South on August, or July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from six A M to four P M to accommodate the Vulcan County Cruisers Car Club Show and Shine event.
Okay, any question on Richard's motion?
I have a question.
Hearing none, we'll call the question, those in favor? Opposed, seen none, secured, dismissed. Oh, the next one is the columbarium.
So usually when we have something like this, come up, I try to give council quite a bit of heads up, but as you all heard, the funeral has changed hands and the previous owner is retiring, we did have three open agreements with the, with Wisner Holdings for the columbarium, so that project was put in place where the town has a cemetery, but the company actually put the capital in to put the columbarium in place and then recovered the capital through the sale of those. And so when I heard that the funeral had been sold, I contacted Pat to see how that would, how we're gonna move forward with it, because now it would just be a private person in our industry selling these niches. So through that dispute of discussion, we talked about putting a new agreement in place under Wisner Holdings and then really, as the conversation progressed, where we didn't, the reason why we did this originally is the town didn't have the funds to overlay the capital for the columbarium. You do have money in contingency reserve that can be used for doing that now, and this would void all, the idea would rescind all of the agreements, and what we would do is we would now sell the niches. So we would pay off the capital that he's put into it at the price that was agreed upon in the agreements and then sell them at a rate that you set in the rates and fees by law. So currently, there's sixty-two niches and I put the Schedule A in here and that's for the three different agreements that we have. So in the second, the first agreement is completely paid out, but there's some money owed to the town for the hundred and fifty that we're supposed to receive, and those were from reserved spots. And so we had twenty in the Phase Two and none in Phase Three, so with the money owed from the company, it was two thousand twenty-five, to purchase the rest of the niches at the, at the agreed price, the eight seventy-five in Phase Two and the, or sorry, the eight hundred in Phase Two and the one thousand twenty-five in Phase Three. It comes to a total of fifty-nine thousand, less than two thousand, so fifty-seven thousand dollars two hundred. Now, to lessen the impact on the town, as this was unexpected, he was accommodating to say that he, you know, he could take this over a couple of years if that would be better or easier. As you know, you do have a substantial balance in the contingency reserve of two hundred eighty-eight thousand, we try to maintain about two hundred. Having said that, we do have a lot purchased that may be coming up in there as well, but still not gonna delete it by beating these down to a critical level, so. So with that, what that does is with this coming into the town side, that it will be able to treat the columbarium exactly the same as we treat buying a regular plot. You guys as council set that rate every year, the rates and fees by law, and at the current rate that we have set for the columbarium for the sixty-two, if we sell most to nothing but town or county residents, we would recover sixty-eight thousand two hundred, if we were to mix, do a fifty-fifty split of county and town residents or for people that live outside the county, we would make seventy-nine thousand fifty for those sales. If we were to sell them to all non-res from the town or county, we would recruit eighty-nine thousand from them, so. This is really just delaying the investment.
Yeah, it's not that investment, and, you know, there's lots of people that have started going that direction compared to, to a plant. And so, I mean, we own the plots, I guess, and.
We, yeah, we own the structure, we're just trying to pay, we made an agreement to pay him back for the capital over the long term. The fact is, we did Phase Three in two thousand twenty-one, so it wasn't that long ago, but we just did Phase Three and so that's why there's so many remaining.
Okay, Judy?
I'll make a recommendation that council directs administration to execute the purchase agreement with Wisner Holdings Limited on behalf of the town for the purchase of sixty-two niches in the Vulcan Cemetery columbarium, project at a cost not to exceed fifty-seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars, with the funds to be drawn from the contingency reserve and to rescind the agreements for Phase One, Two, and Three of this project as presented.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call questions, those in favor? Opposed, seen none, secured, dismissed. Thank you, Judy. Moving on to the committee reports, so the Vulcan District Waste Commission one is the first one. It's kind of short because we didn't have, Dick did him. Well, he did, because he, we didn't have any clinical help that night, so he just did him on his own, but he's already caught some discussion, but there's not enough there. Not much for content, and so.
That's why we have Karen here, because mine would look like that.
Well, I don't want to pick on Dick, but, but, you know, he just.
I think you already don't pay him to do the minutes.
No, no, we don't pay him to do the minutes and.
Two hours for that?
Yeah, well, that was, that was part of the problem is that we got into a huge discussion about something in there and then it was not, he never captured it. And he says, well, I don't know if it would need to be captured, but anyway, so, he got reprimanded over it, so. Any questions on that one? Okay, and then the Marcus approved minutes. I know there are a lot of people that don't sometimes like our minutes, and, I mean, I'm not saying that they're wrong, but there are some organizations that have lots of, you can really follow them, and other ones, you know, you really have to read between the lines, I'm not saying that's wrong, because that's the way most of our organizations are, is you can't read between the lines, but. But anyway, is there any questions on the Marcus February twenty-fifth? Okay, hearing none, mayors and committees of March the seventh? Okay, moving on to the golf course.
I just want to say I'm glad to see minutes again, because Will has a hard time going to them, I think, so it's good to see what's going on.
Yeah, I assume that the probably, golf course will probably still like to have representation from between municipalities, you know, being that there's, you know, gives them that extra support.
I think, Cole, you're the alternative, aren't you?
Yeah, I noticed he's absent, he never reached out to me.
Yeah, he never reached out to me.
All right, any questions on the golf course one? Okay, if not, planning the commission one. Okay, no questions on that one, the senior projects minutes. Oh, senior, I'm sorry.
They're your name.
Yeah, I apologize, I had a problem with the previous name, now I'm gonna have problems with this one. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, you have thoughts, somebody wish to move the meeting course, don't you? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question, those in favor? Opposed, seen none, it's carried, now it's saved. Okay, moving on to council reports, Council Magnus.
As you can see, we had a N P C meeting on April the eighth, I do get the date right on that one. We're actually gonna be having a special meeting on the twenty-fourth of April to deal with some matters that need to be done quicker than our next regular scheduled meeting. I was at the career fair, not representing the town, but by the town booth at the high school on April third, and I thought that was really. I think it was good for the students, we had lots of people come by, I mean, even my booth, it was good for the kids just to, even if they were reading off a piece of paper to ask a complete stranger questions and stuff, and some of them were getting into it. I think the highlight of my day was when you knew the kids were coming from the Kretchenian booth because they had cupcakes with blue icing, and all the kids had like. And I have an airport meeting tomorrow.
Was there a good turnout for that?
There was for the school part, for the. For the, open for the public afterwards, there wasn't as many people, it was steady till about four till five-thirty, and then by six o'clock, everyone was pretty much packed up to go. So, you know, for the first time out, I thought it was pretty good.
Well, glad that, you know, there were some good participants and. Any questions for that? If not, thank you, Ms. Magnus and councillor Vol.
Had a Water Commission meeting on the tenth of this month and it was the audit of the commission. I won't go into too much detail, he'll need something to say, but I guess the big change is coming once we, from the new rates coming up, we'll see how that affects everything, but. The auditor said that the commission as a whole financially was in a very good, in a very good position and. She said, well, I'll just let him finish, because she needs something to say, and it was, it was actually fairly fast, the gal that comes now was, she's very, very well set up with all of us, I did leave you a copy with Karen, and it was, it was good. Seems like we're heading in the right direction that way, but we'll see how it all works out. That was about it. That was about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? If not, thank you, councillor Sanderson.
March twenty-fifth, I had a Marcus Foundation meeting. We're happy to have new rep from Mosley, we had Kevin Stevenson, oh, sorry, Arrowood. And it's nice to see Arrowood participating. We've got somebody new coming to FCSS and now to Marcus, so we're happy to have him on board. The government is changing how we use our surplus funds, so our carryovers must now go into a Dorf account, and then we'll put them into a TBO, and then after they have their audit, which is around September, then we'll be told if we can use them. But right now, it goes from a capital funds to an operational funds. So we do have doors that are going into phase two and three, so Lori's still hoping she can get those replaced, but time will tell. We had approved an amendment on a staff benefits policy. Milo and Arrowood really want to get senior apartments out there. And to get them under, if we have to reapply for HPP, then we will put those apartments under that, and that will probably give us a better, government might be more open to that. But to apply for HPP now instead of four flats, that'd be five buildings. And both Milo and Arrowood say they have the land, and they're, will, more unhappy, they're waiting for that. So we'll, the building committee will be working on that and see where that goes. There's twenty-nine residents as of March twenty-first. I know one more just moved in, and our first, what is it called? Look that up and grab, we got somebody moving in April fifteenth, and that's not a normal senior, it's a, it's a sort of a safe, it's a safe base. That's what it is. And then March thirtieth, we headed to Edmonton for the ASHA convention. We got up there and had time to drop off our bags, and we were invited by Shandals, who got a pin supporting that to me. Three of the Shandals guys we met, Pete was from Edmonton, Trey was from Red Deer, and Brandon was from Calgary. And they took us out to a really nice Italian restaurant and wine and dine us, and we got to know them, and they heard about our project. And, and after they came over to the networking thing at the, and they were around all weekend, they were in the trade, and when Pete was in, going around all the different courses too. So that was very, very nice for us, we really appreciate it. On March thirty-first, we had this Daniel Lewis open the convention, he's a motivational speaker, and he runs a tea business with his wife down east. The theme is still popping after sixty, so the ASHA is now sixty years in the running. So it's powered by people, a lot of things he had, he had, I'll just tell you a few of them. The mind is like a parachute, it only works when it is open. And what are your core values, what makes you unforgettable? So respect, accountability, engagement, collaboration, integrity, show up and show respect and also be a good business. He was really good. He said, "Have the strength of a lion, but be an African dog that takes care of his team or his community." So really enjoyed him. Attended a housing one-on-one with the Alberta government employees, Dean Lucier, Philip Henke, and Barb Hannick. And Barb stated, "There's inconsistency for capital funding. New conversations are being held with the government to have requisitions for capital and not just for operations." So Dorf, as I mentioned, it's in for operational. They suggest we keep trying to get housing advisors out to our facilities and help us advocate to the government and be able to keep our capital money. When we get the funds from the government and you book your project, and by the time you get your material and somebody to do it, then the funding's done. So that's why we have carryovers. If you say, "Well, why can't you spend your money upfront?" Because we don't know exactly how much we're getting, so you can't really budget it until you get it. And then, especially nowadays, when materials are hard to get, so that's, it's with everybody, it's not just here. We had Minister Jason Nixon had an update for the whole group in the afternoon. They, they're working on creating housing around all sectors for homeless and addictions, continuing care and acute care. He gave a review of the lodge program. Fourteen thousand affordable houses have been built to date since they started this last year, two years ago. Sixteen hundred people are in acute care and not needing acute care, these are the most expensive beds. So changes are to get everyone in the right place with the right care, so they're working on that. Create more units in the right place, kind of same thing. The theme always seemed to be for the larger centers, and it starts to weigh heavy on you afterwards when it's always putting it for Calgary, Edmonton, and Nixon did express, you have mixed messages sometimes. He did express that FCSS is a critical part of his ministry. And structure now is the money split, majority goes to Edmonton, Calgary, and rural gets what's left. They need another line items to support the non-city FCSSs. So at the FCSS AA meeting that I went to just here the other day, the RMA and Alberta Unis are working with the government. Some city non-prophets, prophets go around and they get seven or nine huge contributors. And FCSS is one of them that's contributing, so they're trying to figure what those are so that not everybody, so we're giving all the money to Barb and Cole, gets nothing because he gets one. So they're trying to work that out, I don't know how they're gonna do it, but, so they are working on it. What's ahead, the lodge review panel report is to be released, and David Williams, I went to his session, and a huge portion of the money goes to the indigenous for their lodge builds and modernizations. And construction, how is it going to look for steel beams and drywall? Talked about the Stratmore gypsum and drywall plant and potential for more around Alberta. And Alberta does have lots of lumber. For the third intake of the HPP, there's a hundred and fifty million, there was a hundred and twelve applications, with requests over six point two million, so it works out to about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a door. Seventy-six are past compliance stage. Ten percent of the app sent in didn't ask for any money. Imagine sending in your app and not saying we want. So David said he was going to send out these ten percent a letter of approval with zero amount coming from the government, because they didn't ask for anything. Some asked for a hundred percent, they're not accepting any that asked for a hundred percent, and we did not ask for a hundred percent, so we're still hopeful. That was an automatic note then. The panel review is done, so we're hoping to get a phone call and not a letter. But I don't know if they're still gonna hang on and wait till after the election, the seventies letter's out, or if they're gonna get them out. Some have been notified. I did talk to one guy, I think he was from Vagerville, and he, it was their first application to HPP, and they even had their blueprints done. I thought, "Why would you spend the money?" Because that could change in the next, but anyhow. Roundtable for governing officials, everybody's got the same problems. Realize when I'm reading it how long it is, so I apologize. One thing that, I talked to this one person, Jacqueline Alderson, and she said, "What we need to do to get something built is to frame it around the risk to our seniors living in that." That is, a building is filled with asbestos, and, "And how would you like your kids going to?" Like they're replacing a lot of schools that have asbestos in. And she says, "You gotta find something, if there's a little bit of mold, then you gotta really frame it around that so that it will..." But we're not the only one in that situation. But still seems like it's the big cities that are getting them, so, so. It was a really good roundtable with vacancies in the rural lodges, and so a lot of them are opening up two rooms to make one room. And we have done that, and maybe we need to do more of that, but then we'll have to, we'll be capped right now at twenty-nine, because I think we'd only make twenty-five rooms, so. Make arrangements with other lodges that have waiting lists and have their people come to us, and then when they're open up, then they can go back there. And I thought that was a good idea, to take somebody else's waiting list, so, you know, there was a lot of potential with that. Open it up to doctors, you know, locums and nurses and fire and EMS, whoever needs it. Respite from the hospital, as long as they're not in a wheelchair, can they have respite there? So there was a lot of great ideas with that. So it was a great convention, so I thank you for letting me attend. April eighth, I went to the MPC. April tenth, we had the FCSS AA meeting at Saskatoon Farm, and it was really great attendance. And I sat across from Rob, I can't remember his last name, he's with, with Ilse County. He's a councillor and on the FCSS board, and he thought all FCSSs just gave a little sum of money to whoever needed it. And he was shocked when we did the roundtable and, and found out the issues that everybody else is having, so. See, I thought, "Don't read that, go over here." There's a microsite that's now up and running, it's an impact site explaining FCSS, because a lot of people don't know what it is. I didn't know how much they did until I worked with them, so it's been a real eye-opener for me. And to help get the ministers out, especially to the communities, the MLAs and the ministers, because a lot of them just think, "We just get this little sum and hand it out," they don't realize how busy it is. So FCSS one-on-one will now be put online, so everybody can have that, whereas before you had to go to the convention, so that's all good news. Multiple municipalities are now budget funding FCSSs to give employees wage increases, because we've been told that there will be no more increases for the next three years. And we're just wondering if this is, if that's what they did with the services. We're just wondering if they're putting a stall on this, because they're looking at taking FCSS over, which I think would be very detrimental to rural communities if they took those two. So it might be something FCSS might have to propose to Talon County going forward, see what the government's going to do with us. And what I liked, they had every, there was eighteen FCS departments in the South Region meeting there. You had to get two successes and two challenges, and it was, a lot of them were the same, but some of them are different. So it's just interesting to see how, except for the big cities, and then they just kind of, we won't speak right now, because, you know, how can they get out what, when they see how frustrating some of us are doing? I also have a, I'm just gonna attend the adult AGM meeting, that's tomorrow night at seven, and I'll have an FCSS meeting on Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Busy time again, Judy, so thank you for taking the time to participate in those things. Any questions for Judy? If not, thank you again, councillor McCollum.
April ninth, I had the senior protect meeting, and yes, the safe spaces suite is finally being used. They have earmarked one additional one if needed, and they've also set aside some beds for if seniors need a place to kind of recover, to have home care come, so they're not alone after surgeries. So, and then they can have their meals and all that kind of stuff. So, because we have a lot of seniors that live alone, that are sixty-five plus in our county. Yeah, and then I did attend the joint use meeting for Richard on April the tenth. And the group that was at the table, I believe are going to work very well with Chris. And I think a lot of positive things came out of that meeting. Hopefully you got that feedback. And it was nice to actually attend one, so, and I think that's all I have. I might have missed some stuff before that, and then I have a library meeting on Wednesday coming up.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? No, thank you, councillor Dunne.
I like Richard had the water commission meeting April tenth. Yeah, we, we went over our financial statement presentation, which went fairly well, we got good feedback on that. Coming into the meeting, we'd kind of been given a heads up of a potential issue for the smaller municipalities, in particular Champion and Carmingate. We're having troubles with their plant operators taking the wrong courses and not being certified potentially. So we were kind of relieved to hear that they've found a solution to that issue theoretically, solution to that issue. They've been, I think it's Champion or Carmingate, I can't remember which one, has given permission to operate without one for a month.
Champion.
They're gonna have one, he's just not gonna be certified. So I was concerned about how it would affect our municipality with our guys that their, I guess credentials would be on the line. To my understanding, they have to go down and, once or twice a week, is it, that they go?
We go down once we can do the sampling on the line. Their request was to do the operations of the plant. If they do that, that's not the town that does that, that's the individual operator.
Yeah.
It puts them at risk.
Yeah, risk, but. So hopefully, there's a solution there, and it's not gonna put any burden on our employees, so. Other than that, it wasn't a whole lot discussed, it was pretty short.
I think Carmingate was looking at using the operator from Barons to help out.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah.
I guess another thing that was discussed is the new water plant in Milo, we kind of were talking about.
Yeah.
All that's gonna save the county on water costs in Mosley. I wasn't aware how much the county subsidized that water. Their water's eight dollars a cube.
Yeah.
So I think the county subsidizes half of that, is what it says.
Yeah, it was, it was at least half of it, I can't remember the exact number, but it was a lot.
So we should be pretty, even though ours is going up, it's, we're still pretty cheap compared to some places.
Question? They're going on, Milo and Mosley are going on that Water for Life, right? And they're paying for that themselves, is that correct?
It's all ground.
It's all ground money.
No, but I mean, it's, there's not counties.
No, it is counties.
The county, the county got the ground.
And the county's going to own the line all the way from...
They own the line, but not the plant, maybe that's what it is.
Milo's gonna have the plant.
Yes, Milo's gonna have, that's what it is.
Yeah, there, there's a few wrinkles in that one. They're gonna be interested, they're putting a lot of faith in the, in the new agreements that happen between municipalities, that if something goes wrong, the...
The ECFs.
The, the new agreement will work in, instead of going to a commission or, and so, it'll be interesting to see. Anyway, because yeah, there is talk that the water will go all the way from Arrow, from Milo to Arrowood up to Mosley. And maybe pick up Queenstown when they're going by, but then we had that same issue with Kirkholby too, you know, we had. Because I think there's seven or eight houses in Queenstown, I think, that could qualify for it too. Yeah.
Another thing in our financial statements, I did notice, is there are a few expenditures that will be coming off, you know, it doesn't sound like, not real soon, but, you know, I think there's, the first one comes off in five years, so that should help curb a bit of the water costs going forward as these debts get paid off, but.
Okay, you have a question?
Just, you were saying, some of the guys were, were not taking the right training?
Yeah, apparently, I'm not an expert on this training, but they had enrolled their operator in the Rob course.
Like the, like who's responsible for it?
I would say their CAO, operators are always responsible for their own training.
Because there's how many levels there, there's...
Well, there's small systems, level one, two, three, and four.
They took the wrong systems, that's what happened.
Yeah, they, yeah, they may have enrolled in level one, small systems.
Yeah.
But they were, as Dick said, they were given permission to, it's transferable somehow, so basically they just have, have to wait until he's done.
For level one, you have to have your experience.
Yeah.
I haven't heard a lot about that side of things.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking at you.
Okay, any other questions, Cole? If not, thank you. Now to me, in March, I had three SEWA meetings, and then a solid way... To me, in March, I had three SEWA meetings, and then a solid waste meeting. And at the solid waste meeting, they did approve the contract for the producer responsibility. Dick got it up to ninety thousand dollars, you know, so, and, but there is gonna be more paperwork involved in the producer responsibility part, so he's not sure exactly what's gonna happen on that, but... Excuse me. And next week, next Wednesday, we have our audited financial statements to... And it looked like we had a loss, but we purchased a truck that had come out of, it was in the operational side, and it doesn't take it out until the auditors move it around. And so, unfortunately, Dick got into trouble because we're in a loss, but yet if you take out the truck, we're in a bit of a surplus. So, and he, he gets into trouble all the time, because he codes stuff wrong. Meanwhile, I call it coding wrong, because, you know, like, as an example, you can see an insurance policy that were over by ten thousand dollars, and then the other ones were, he, or he's under by ten thousand, and he's over by ten thousand dollars in this other one. If he would have just coded it back the other way, they're both in the same, so... And we've got a couple bean counters that can't, they can add, but they can't subtract. So, you know, they can't seem to remove that one figure down and say, "Well, jeez, you know, if you look at that one, move it back up," you know, insurance is insurance is insurance, I mean, look into three categories, and, but anyway, so, he depends on the auditor to correct all that mistakes, and so, we'll find out how we do at the end of that. But next year, with this producer responsibility coming in at ninety thousand dollars, we should see some changes in what's being proposed for next year's, because that'll really help a lot.
Does the estimated cost then come as a hundred?
Well, they, recycling, they pay three hundred thousand, and about a hundred thousand dollars in profits, you know, from selling the metals and cardboard and that. And so theoretically, it was two hundred thousand, so ninety thousand now, it'll bring down to a hundred thousand, and... It, there's, they don't understand too, this producer responsibility is that if you buy a wash machine and take it home and take the card, uncardboard it, then producer responsibility pays the waste authority for the cardboard. But furniture villa brings it to your house, uncrated, then it's supposed to be from Javella's responsibility to pay for the cardboard to be recycled. So, you know, it makes no sense. I mean, he, they're trying to explain to these people that, you know, they're, the cardboard should be a cardboard, whether it's on the wash machine that you buy, or whether it's, comes, and they, but anyway. Because they won't take any commercial cardboard, they won't take any commercial waste without charging for it on the recycling side. So, it's just, it was, you send it all home to the customer, and the customer can put it in the collection bin, and... You know, I mean, so, there's a huge argument going on with that, but, but anyway, the nice thing about it is that it should help subsidize some of that cost of recycling, bring it down to more of a fair amount. I have a SEWA meeting on the twenty-fourth, if, with the South Grove, I'm not sure if you go to that one at Coldell?
I'm theoretically efforting to go, but I might be phoning Barbara to take my spot.
Okay, well, I'm going down to it, so I'm going to speak on behalf of SEWA at the South Grove, one at Coldell. So if, for some reason, somebody needs a ride, let me know, and we can, we can carpool it together, whichever. And then, the regular SEWA meeting is on the twenty-fifth. With, with the SEWA project, right at the moment, it's still, everything looks really great. They're just eager to get started. This Global Green is eager to get started, but they're still waiting for the two agreements to be approved by the legal teams, because it's an international agreement that they were trying to push, or promote, or whatever you want to call it. And our provincial lawyers are saying, "Most of this stuff is not pertinent or needed," so they're redrawing it, and so far, Global Green has said, "Not a problem, you know, we'll, we'll have no issues with it." So, it's, it's taken them longer, Global Green's really quite disappointed it's taken so long, but yet, this is the first international one that they've ever had to deal with. So anyway, that's, that's it for me. Any questions for you? Okay, if not, someone wish to move that councillor's march, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? There are now a couple questions, is there? Posed, seeing none, it's carried. Okay, we'll move on to the action list.
Councillor had a chance to review it, we have everything finished from the last meeting, thankfully, just Karen's name's on most of those, so, she was able to complete everything from the last meeting and the last one. The first one's gonna be outstanding for some time, I guess.
Sorry, I lost my speed.
Oh.
Just giving me that.
It's hard to do the minutes without a computer, Karen? So, if, if councillor's happy with that, I can move on to my CA report.
Sure.
So, pretty straightforward, I continued to work on the development agreement and amendments for the Willows. I had a major breakthrough on that with introducing Henry to a consultant that's actually done that before. And it turns out, we've had quite a few conversations, and he's hoping that we can... Henry probably won't enter into a development agreement for the entire, all the stuff that he owns, but we're all, suggested working on a small development agreement for a small chunk, and then tie him to, not an area structure plan, they call it a conceptual scheme. And what it does is it sets all of the stuff that we have, we take all the plans, everything. It's one step down from an area structure plan, so it's not a, it's not a, a bylaw they have to pass or anything. It's just something that you can accept. And then, should a chunk of that land be sold off to a different owner, the town, instead of the developer, can provide all the information from this conceptual scheme that says, "Okay, here's how it's gonna be finished," and then you can enter into a development agreement from that. So we kind of beat that up quite a bit, again. I can go into a lot more detail with, with councillor, if you'd like to talk to me further. I can talk about it for a long time inside this report, there's other things that I need to catch on. So with North and Company on the purchase agreement, closing date amendment that has... We have now moved to the twenty-second of April, so the first closing date will be tomorrow, and everything's looking like it's closed in place from the feedback that I've gotten from Milo and our legal team, so that's good news. I was informed this morning that future bill is, and it's not part of my report, but on the same topic, future bill is looking to move forward their closing date to the end of April, beginning of May, so it looks like they may be moving something forward. So, asked if the town would be agreeable to that, and I didn't hesitate in responding, yes, that the councillor would support that. So that's moving forward. Reviewed the assessment for the school requisition information, just trying to see how that's gonna work. I think we're, as part of our tax notices this year, we're gonna actually send out a notification on how the edge date tax works, because it's really gonna be a significant increase in people's property tax, and they need to know that doesn't, although we collect it, we don't use any of it. Actually, our requisition went up, so... So, we're working on preliminary mill rate calculations again, and we'll have everything ready for the committee, the whole, we've got the majority of the things that we've talked about with councillor, including in the budget now, and Amanda's started putting that together, so... We worked on a purchase agreement for the Colbert project, that was, again, started with an agreement on what we could do with the agreement, so I had to thank councillor for, for leaving that for, without a whole bunch of background on it, just... And then, we've had a ton of inquiries, as everybody knows, who's been open about pioneering elevators coming down tomorrow. Lots of conversations on historical values, things like that. Again, it's an asset for, for a great company, and the historical value of the thing was built in the nineties, so it's not, it's not an old elevator in our community. The annex is quite a bit older, but the elevator itself is not. So, and it's a liability, so there, they will be starting tomorrow, and that, everything goes as planned. Again...
Do you know how long it's supposed to take?
I'm not sure, I just got... Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if they had a timeline.
Sounds like the guy that comes in is pretty, he's done hundreds of them, so...
Yes.
I, I know they've been in stripping the place the last week or so.
I'd like to meet everyone that comes down.
Well, they'll drop the metal off first.
Yeah, and, and I informally heard that the fellow that's done this has done enough, that if there's big crowds and everything, he'll, well, can postpone and go for coffee, and then come back and do it when the crowd goes away, so, just from a liability standpoint, those sort of things, so... Sounds like he's done a lot, so... So what you're saying is, if we wanna stop it, we just want a big crowd?
Just form a big crowd, you won't be able to do anything. I'm so glad we're recording this, and no part does the town want that to happen.
The sad thing about it is, is, you know, it's, it's a liability to the owner, and it's, you know, it's, it's tough to see, you lose one of these in the community, but like Kim says, it has no age value compared to the ones that were there prior to, but, but you hate to ever lose anything like that out of your community, but, you know, I, I'm just kind, why, you know, to them, it's, it's not an asset, it's a, it's a liability, and it's sad.
So I gave you a brief description of a conceptual scheme, and I've included that in there. One of the things with the conceptual scheme, the town is gonna have to look forward, going forward, is off-site levy, swiped out, quite a bit of research the last little while on that. And what that does is, if you have a developer comes in, or a stage of the developing doesn't, doesn't move forward in the way that the town wants it to develop, you would then finish that portion, and then, and then put off-site levies in place for that, so... We've never considered it before, but it's something that'll have to be considered, should things go that direction. So, completed the twenty-twenty-five AMSC wage survey, so thank you for putting out a policy, it'll be passed as they sent it to you in the next week. Met with Fortis on the industrial servicing under the franchise agreement, was a little disappointed, because clause sixteen says that Fortis will cover all expansions to the distribution system. But that, that expansion to the distribution system has to be customer-based, so if the town is developing our industrial subdivision as we are, we consider that that they're doing, expanding the distribution system. Asked them if it was covered with the franchise agreement, said, "No, once we develop on Maryland for the sale of lots, they consider us a developer, no different than anyone else." So, we'll keep working on that, but it's looking like we'll have a capital cost for the installation of the, of the power, should that be proposed. They have sent the new estimates. Worked with SEMA for cost estimates, stops the design plans for the Willows, and really that... What councillor should be aware of there is the plan, the original design plans were done by Jubilee, and they've never been signed off to the town, so we use them for, as a template for how we want development to move forward, but nobody owns those plans but Jubilee. So I asked SEMA, because they were developed in two thousand and seven, asked SEMA to contact Jubilee and to see if, if they'd be willing to give up that to, and allow SEMA to update and make them the town's plans, so, they, they may be willing to, they may not. But we started that ball rolling, and that leads into that conceptual scheme, because we can then provide those drawings. But right now, we shouldn't be providing those to anyone, and not ours. So, various community member inquiries, demolition, marketing, development, I'm sure you guys know most of those concerns if you've heard them yourselves, and then councillors with the land purchase, obviously the water break, which Stu worked on, and they had some issues with the clamps, so they had to realign the pipe and redo up the clamps twice, so, but...
So was that the same spot it was with it?
It was the very first one, was the major one, yeah, they put two, they put in a length pipe to replace the chunk that broke, and the clamp set either hand, through the movement of the pipe, one started leaking, so they dug it out, they realigned it, tightened it, and then, of course, it took the second one out of realignment, and then, so, the last time they did it, they dug the whole thing up, realigned the entire thing, and lowered the water pressure, and reseeded the whole thing, so... So, it was not a good situation, digging the same hole three times, but... Dried it out quite a bit for what it was. I was away from the office on vacation, March thirty-first and the first, and attended Dave's retirement celebration at the shop. The guys did a pretty good job, they blew up limbs, all kinds of things in the town shop, it was, they did, they did a good job, so... The meetings of interest, obviously, getting with Christine Holmes, and, and, and then moving that forward to the next meeting, where brought in a development agreement consultant for introductions, and then again, I met with, with Weiser Holdings for the Colbert area agreement, so, that's my report.
Okay, any questions for Kim? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the northern officer. Okay, questions on that one, Tom?
Nice to see some numbers beside those things.
Yeah, yeah.
The special meeting that the MPC is putting together is for consideration for waivers on, on development to align with some of the existing properties that are in place, so, and they wanna get moving on them right away, so that's why they're calling the special meeting.
Okay.
Not to ruin it for those of you that sit on the MPC. I know you know.
Okay, no questions for you? All right, we'll move on to public works.
Stu has got started on the, on the campground expansion. The cemetery road is not complete, there's still some landscaping that'll be done when the ground tightens up over there. And obviously, the ice has come out of the arena, and the water break took up a good portion of their time.
As we had need of that cemetery road, it was really nice, because it was muddy when we walked up there, and it was just so nice that that road's all gravel down, and everybody could get out there, they were all wearing their boots, so... They did a good job, so thanks to them.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on Stu's? Okay, and we'll move on to the community services managers.
Chris is doing quite a bit of preparation for the Carmengate as well, and he's also working on what, what he's calling a landing site. It's a website expansion that should be rooted, we want to look for a lot, those sort of things, build a house, those sort of things, so, I got a peek at it today, it's actually really, really quite a, quite a good website so far. He still wants to make quite a few tweaks to it, the base of it is really, it's not as governmental as, as our town website.
Okay, any questions on Chris's? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to Barbara. Was it for dogs who barking and vehicles making a lot of noise, we, we had, probably work the dog?
Yeah, the dogs have been a treat at most of the piss, this time, the last little while, we actually, I believe, the dog went out of the kennel this week, right?
Yeah.
Spent a week after, after one.
Excuse me?
It's unusual circumstances behind it as well.
Okay, any questions on Channing's? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the fire report. Okay, if not, we'll move on to the fire report. Was it for, you know, medical and uh, Stu had, had, had been worms with hardly any calls now, so. Any questions on Doug's? Okay, if not, somebody wish to, the administrative reports, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Here now called a question, those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Okay, we'll move on to the last one, Judy. She moved to Germany, it's at, it's been ten, thank you very much.
I don't even miss Will.
Discussion on Judy's motion, all in favor, opposed, it's carried, thank you.
Did you say you didn't miss Will?